Testing, one, two, three?
Testing, one, two, three.
Good? All right. All right. Motion to revert back to the resume of the meeting. Meeting is now back in session. Seventeen dash seven-one-one offered by Councilor Lango Kern be resolved that the city solicitor's office looks into making sure that Wright's Pond will remain open to Medford residents only after a grant was received from the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Coastal Zone Management. Councilor Lango Kern.
Thank you, President Carviallo. My attention was drawn to an article that was in the transcript last week by a Medford resident concerned Medford resident with regards to us thankfully getting a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management. I think obviously it's a grant that we're going to put to good use, but the resident and I'm sure a number of residents who frequent the pond, who fought last year to make sure it remained open to only Medford residents are now wanting to make sure that that's still going to be the case if we do accept and use this grant. I believe it's a valid question. I would assume and hope that this definitely will stay open to just Medford residents, but maybe we could get a report back just to confirm that and to put residents' minds at ease. I think that will be very helpful. I know we have the solicitor here right now, but I don't know if he's ready to answer such a question. I'm sure you're not ready to answer it, but... Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slusser.
And before Rose called, the last resolution was with regards, there was a number of people complaining to the pitcher of the council meeting last Tuesday, and we spoke about, Council Marks and I spoke about the complaints we received, and hopefully we can get that fixed and get the whole system which we've been asking for fixed in the near future. Because for some reason, sometimes the city council meetings are not being, and no fault of anybody doing the pitcher, but it just needs to be updated because the complaints were rolling in on Tuesday with regards to the pitcher. So I move approval on this resolution.
Thank you.
And ask for my colleague's support.
Councilor Knight.
Mr. President, this is the first I've heard of the city receiving a grant. Could the council tell us a little bit about what this grant is?
Councilor Lango Kern.
Yes. In the Medford transcript, it's a rain garden coming to Wright's Pond. The city of Medford is constructing a rain garden at the middle of Fells Pond that will help filter out pollutants, including phosphorus, nitrogen, suspended solids, and bacteria. It will also be designed to conserve water. So it's a project they're going to do in the near future. The rain garden project will cost the city a total of fifty thousand and is a match project for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant that Medford received from the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management. I can go into more detail as another few paragraphs, but it is on page A three of the Medford transcript. The rain garden will contain plants that soak up phosphorus, nitrogen from rainwater before it flows into Wright's Pond. I think it seems like a natural way to remove, obviously chemicals from the pond. So anything we have with regards to a grant to be able to do this, I think is extremely important, especially I have another resolution on where the article does mention some concerning things as well. But I think the rain garden is definitely a step in the right direction. It's only going to help better the pond, especially for the hundreds of kids that swim in that pond every summer, so.
Point of affirmation, Councilor Del Rosso.
Mr. President, are we talking about item number seventeen-seven-one-one or?
No, one-one at the moment.
One-one?
Yes.
And the vote is to remain open to residents only after a grant was received?
And the solicitor will?
I don't quite understand the semantics of the resolution, and I don't know if we should base our?
We are waiting for an opinion from the solicitor. He will give us an opinion of that. Councilor, you want to vote on?
I'll move approval question, Mr. President.
Seventeen-seven-one-one, but just to respond, I'm not really sure what the confusion is. Sometimes when you get a state or federal grant, it changes the parameters of how we operate. So we are making sure that the hundreds of families that use it from Medford, it remains only Medford. This was a big issue back about a year ago when some of the law was looked into and they were potentially going to be opening it up to non-Medford residents and the city kind of?
Thank you. You are for it, Councilor Del Rosso. On the motion by Councilor Lango Kern on seventeen-seven-one-one, second and by, Councilor Falco.
Roll call.
Roll call has been requested, Mr. Clerk. Councilor Del Rosso.
Yes.
Councilor Falco.
Yes.
Councilor Knight.
Yes.
Councilor Lango Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Scott Perry.
Yes.
Yes. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion passes. Seventeen-seven-one-two offered by Councilor Lango Kern be resolved that the Energy and Environment Office update the Medford City Council as to why the city does not test Wright's Pond for certain pollutants that could be caused by runoff of snow, of plowed piles of snow near the pond in the winter. Be further resolved that once the rain garden is put in place, Wright's Pond will be tested for such pollutants before opening in the summer of two thousand eighteen. Councilor Lango Kern.
Thank you, President Carviallo. I wanted to bring this up. I had a second resident email me with regards to the same article. In the second part of the article, it mentions how the city stores plowed snow on Wright's Pond, and residents have grown increasingly concerned about pollutants in the pond. Because, and then our Energy and Environment Director said because the city stores plowed piles of snow near the pond in the winter, which runs into the pond when it melts. This is a way for the runoff to get cleaned, treated, and filtered naturally. Hopefully the rain gardens will help that. But it says we've tested what is there, but there's a perception that there's bad stuff running off in there. So a resident who does frequent the pond called me, also asked me to reference the article, and it is concerning that we're putting plowed snow there. So my next, this resolution and the next has to do with figuring out if we can maybe do it another way. If we have runoff, there's a number of different things that are coming off the snow, within the snow, that are being stored at Wright's Pond. Maybe we should look into it more, and if this is a problem, then we can hopefully store the snow somewhere else because we want to make sure that we're keeping the pond as safe and clean as possible. I know that a resident was interested in the topic. I'm not sure if I can name him, but did reach out to the director of the Mystic River Watershed Association, who thought that allowing, piling up snow and allowing it to run into the pond is a poor choice. So I think this is just something that definitely needs to be looked into. If we have piled snow that can be put somewhere else, I think we need to do that. So if we could have a response from our Energy and Environment Office with regards to if there's been any testing, if so, what type of testing and when, that would be extremely helpful. And if we haven't, then maybe we should see how the rain garden goes. Once it's implemented, then potentially do some testing. That's obviously not my forte, but if we could kind of figure out what's going on here, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilor Lango Kern. On the motion by Councilor Lango Kern, second and by, Councilor Falco, all those in favor? Motion passes. Seventeen-seven-one-three offered by Councilor Lango Kern be resolved that the Medford City Council be provided a list of all places that plowed snow is stored during the winter months. Councilor Lango Kern.
Thank you, President Carviallo. If we could just have the Department of Public Works and/or the administration let the city council know where snow is kept when we take it off our streets. I think that just goes hand in hand with the prior resolution to try to make sure we're storing it in the right place.
Thank you. On the motion of Councilor Lango Kern, second and by, Councilor Scott Perry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to take papers into the hands of the clerk. Seconded by Councilor Del Rosso, all the favor? Motion passes. Offered by Councilor Marks, be resolved that the electronic speed sign be placed on Emerson Street and a twenty-five mile per hour sign be posted. Vice President Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received a call from a resident on Emerson Street who said because the street is a cut through, cars are speeding down, and where we purchased recently two electronic speeding signs, I would ask that one be placed on Emerson Street. And in addition, the city has moved from the thirty mile an hour speed signs to now the new ordinance, which is twenty-five, which was enacted by this council and by the Traffic Commission, I thank the chief who's here tonight, that additional signs be placed on secondary roads, Mr. President, that alert residents of the new speed, which is twenty-five miles an hour.
Thank you. On the motion by Council, on the motion by Council Mark, second by Councilor Del Rosso, all those in favor? Motion passes. Offered by Vice President Marks, be resolved that sidewalk at three forty-nine Fulton Street be replaced in the interest of public safety. Vice President Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been on the sidewalk list for some time now, and the resident asked me to try to expedite because of trip and fall concerns. So I would just ask that this be sent to Mr. Kearns and DPW in the interest of public safety.
Thank you. On the motion by Vice President Marks, seconded by Councilor Del Rosso, all those in favor? Motion passes. Offered by Vice President Marks, be resolved that the rodent issue in North Medford in Wellington be discussed. Vice President Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Residents are probably aware, on the Somerville-Medford line in South Medford, there's been an issue for a number of years with rodents, and the city embarked upon a program which monitors and sets out traps in particular areas. And now I'm receiving complaints in the Wellington area, some of which may be due to the bridge construction that's going on and some of the other development. But I've been getting a number of complaints of rodents in the Wellington area, and just recently I received two phone calls on North Medford, up at the top of the heights, where they're seeing rats in the area, Mr. President. So I would ask that the city immediately set up some type of monitor or activity to try to nip this in the bud, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilor Del Rosso.
Mr. President, I resent the fact that South Medford has been singled out as a place for rats. Secondly, I want to thank always the Department of Public Health, which has been proactive over the years. which has been proactive over the years in an urban area where rats are part of the landscape. But that does not mean we have to suffer their incursions. So thank you to the Board of Health. We've suffered an uptick in their activity over the summer months because of some of the work done on the Green Line Extension Project, Mr. President. It is no doubt that the work done in the Wellington area has certainly moved some of them. And that may be exacerbated as we're entering the winter months. And our little furry friends are looking for a place to bed down for the winter. So I hope that the Board of Health will not only exercise their own discretion on this matter, but urge the contractors in the area who are required to bait and monitor to step up their efforts.
Thank you. On the motion by Vice President Marks, seconded by Counselor Del Rosso. All those in favor? Motion passes. Offered by Vice President Marks. Be resolved that the construction equipment left on Mangels Street be removed in the interest of public safety. Vice President Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was some road work done on Mangels and that surrounding area. And some construction equipment has been left alongside the road for a period of time. And residents are concerned and would like to see the equipment moved, Mr. President.
On the motion by Counsel Marks, seconded by Counselor Del Rosso. All those in favor? Motion passes. Offered by Vice President Marks. Be resolved that a pedestrian crossing button be added to the blinking lights at the corner of Ninth Street and Middlesex Avenue. Vice President Marks.
We're probably all familiar with this particular intersection at Ninth and Middlesex. It's right at the entrance to Cappy's on Middlesex. And sometime back, the council actually pushed our state delegation to get a working blinking light. We tried to get a full set of lights there, but we were instructed by the state, because of the proximity to the intersection of Wellington, that that wouldn't be feasible by the state traffic engineer. And now I'm asking, Mr. President, if anyone has ever had to traverse there, they'll realize that the light blinks, but no one stops. And to get across, you're taking your life in your own hands. So I would ask that this be sent to our state delegation where Middlesex is a state road, requesting that the addition of a pedestrian crossing button be added to the blinking set of lights.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. On the motion by Vice President Marks, seconded by Counselor Del Rosso. All those in favor? Motion passes. Offered by Vice President Marks. Be resolved that the car park parking lot receive a speed bump and a slow down parking lot signs be installed. Vice President Marks.
So, Mr. President, this Saturday, I was at car park. And I had a number of residents that were attending a birthday party in the tot lot come up to me and said, you realize when you're coming up Fulton Street, that you, where the street branches off, that there's no indication that you're going into an actual parking lot, which is car park? And cars are still going at the same clip as if they were on Fulton Street? And it really is a very dangerous situation. Their suggestion, which I think is great, and I know we have the chief here, would be to put at least some warning signs that you're entering a parking lot. This is no longer a road. And secondly, I'd like to see a raised crosswalk, but I know we have those movable speed bumps that the city is putting around the community in a way to... Chief, would you mind coming up? We'd like to put you on the spot, Chief.
Chief, name and address for the record, please.
Leo A. Sacco, Jr., two twenty-seven Elm Street, Medford, Chief of Police.
Just if you could address, do you know what I'm talking about?
Exactly, yes.
Is there a way that we could kind of address maybe some signage and possible speed bump? I know raised crosswalk is expensive.
Yeah, the raised crosswalk issue is somewhat out of my control. We can recommend, but we can't force it to happen because of the cost factor, of course. The temporary speed bump is doable. I'll speak with Mr. Karrons to see if there are any available. Signage is the simple thing. We can post that area that technically is, there's no outlet when they go straight. And a lot of times when cars are coming straight up Fulton, they just go straight and they think they can connect with the rest of Fulton, and they can't.
Right.
So post it at that end and then, you know, the speed limit, the posting for children playing playground.
That'd be great.
So those, the signage piece is simple. The other piece is the crosswalk, the speed bump. Takes a little more effort.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. On the motion by Vice President Marks, seconded by Counselor Del Rosso.
Mr. President, let this be sent to the Traffic Commission? And now the chief is aware.
On the motion by Vice President Marks, seconded by Counselor Del Rosso. All those in favor? Motion passes. Petitions, presentations, and similar matters. Seventeen seven zero nine. Petition by John Storola, twenty Metcalf Street, Medford, to address the council on how to serve the people of Medford. Name and address for the record, please.
John Storola, twenty Metcalf Street, Medford, Massachusetts. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilors. Very happy to be here to present...
It's always a pleasure to have you here, Dr. Storola.
Well, I appreciate that coming from you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I do want to ask the audience if I'm too loud or not. Can you hear me clearly? I have problems with hearing too here. So I also want to thank city clerk Ed Finn for providing me with this hearing aid. That'll help very much. Well, anyway, my subject tonight is how to serve the people of Medford. And of course, we're all very interested in that because that's the purpose of government, service. We wouldn't need government at all if we did not need service. And so the city council here takes an oath to support the Massachusetts Constitution and in that way, to serve the people of the common wealth. The council is to be appreciated for this loyalty to the people. And we, the people, have faith that the council will serve the people and that this is the reason we vote to elect you. And we express pride in your service. And we trust you to do your job because of what we think is in your hearts. We think that in your hearts is the desire to make life less painful and more comfortable for us at a reasonable cost to us. We, the people, support the city government by paying our taxes as the government ordains. And we give up some of our precious liberties. And we trust that the government will spend our hard-earned money wisely. But does it? In my opinion, Medford is near insolvency. Now, notice I say near. I hope I am wrong. But the very tight financial condition of Medford will not permit us to proceed with the police station, the fire station, the library, school building maintenance, infrastructure, pension funding, proper zoning in order to limit density, preserving neighborhoods, reducing park fees and parking permits, street cleaning, police foot patrols, Medford Square revitalization, payroll increases for our employees, removal of tree stumps, on and on. Medford would have to borrow many millions of dollars to pay for all those needs. We already have a debt of fifty-one million dollars, which we reduce at a cost of six million dollars a year. But we need twenty-two million dollars for the police station alone. Taxes must be raised year after year, as they have been for the past thirty years, in good times and in recessions, in order to keep our heads above water. And now, the city is taxing the taxes we have already paid. And it is using the Community Preservation Act to do this. Our tax levy is at the very top limit, which Proposition Two and a Half permits, which is one hundred nine million dollars this year alone, which is four million dollars more than last year. Now, add to that four million dollars more, the one million dollar CPA surtax, and we have a twenty-five percent increase over the increase. Confusing, isn't it? But CPA supporters love the extra revenue, which takes from Peter to pay Paul. Our city government is averse to charter review, which has not been discussed in thirty years. We have a charter which gives power to a strong mayor and a weak council. No offense. Our city government is averse to term limits, which will provide more democracy for the folks. Two terms were adequate for George Washington, for Thomas Jefferson, for James Madison, for James Monroe, and Andrew Jackson, et cetera, et cetera. And two terms should be enough for us. In the Federalist Papers, James Madison said, "A republic is a government which derives all its powers, directly or indirectly, from the people and is administered by people holding their offices for a limited period." James Madison wrote that in seventeen eighty-eight. Are our civil servants insecure? You bet they are. For what other reason would they seek public office over and over again? I wish the mayor and the council could shed their insecurities. Incumbency is selfish. Have you noticed how the promise of increased revenue makes incumbents ravenous? They should feel secure in their ability and power to give of themselves outside of politics. Yes, to give. Now, there is the way to serve the people of Medford. The incumbents must get out of the way. We have one mayor and seven councilors, and they stay for many, many years. Each counselor is paid thirty thousand dollars a year, which is more than seven hundred fifty dollars for each meeting, like this one. But we have thirty-six thousand registered voters, and many of them would be happy to serve without compensation. Why? Because they are, by nature, generous people. We must urge our voters to vote out the career politicians, to drain the Medford morass, and to vote in the outsiders because the people of the city council, now listen carefully to this, has been co-opted by the school committee. Yes, as I see it, the school committee infiltrates and then runs the city council. This is a case of the tail wagging the dog. Let me explain. The mayor is chairman of the school committee and is compensated for that position in the school committee budget. A majority of the city council has connections with the school committees. Some have relatives on the school payroll now. And another school committee member may be elected to the city council this year having finished seventh in the primary elections. The city council votes to accept the school budget as it is presented by the superintendent of schools and the school committee each June of the year without making any significant changes. We just don't know where the school committee ends and the city council begins. No one favors education more than I do. All of my fulfillment and the fulfillment of my four children is due to education. But our school committee, which also rules the city, does not educate. The school budget compensates all of them very, very well. The cost to the city of Medford is probably thirteen thousand dollars a year for each enrolled student. That's very high. And yet, the record is regrettable. Our next generation must be saved. We must serve all the people of Medford. We must vote all the incumbents. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Storola. Seventeen seven one four. Petition by Robert Penta, Zero Summit Road, Medford, Mass, to address the council on the issue of becoming a sanctuary city. Before Counselor Penta, I'm sorry, by former Counselor gets up, I'd like to read something that the city council passed unanimously in November of two thousand sixteen. Dear Mr. President, city councilors, whereas the strength of our nation is derived from its history of diversity that has enriched our community with a variety of cultures, faith, traditions, and viewpoints. And whereas the city of Medford is a community that welcomes and values the very racial and ethnic makeup of our residents. And whereas the city of Medford stands in support of all immigrant groups and newcomers as they pursue the American dream. And whereas the city of Medford will work to model our city as a safe and welcoming place that equally encourages all to speak, personal, seek personal advancement, and to reside in peaceful consentment in Medford. And the city of Medford rejects all words and acts of hate, indifference, and intolerance that undermine our neighbors, community of faith, and our schools and thwart our, thwart the promise of equal justice. Whereas our nation was founded on the fundamental principles that all persons are entitled to equal protection of law, equal opportunity in the enjoyment of civil and human rights. Now, therefore, the city of Medford proudly supports the Medford Conversations Project to promote dialogue and the collaboration of race in Medford and beyond. And signed, Mayor Stephanie Burris. And this was passed on a seven to zero motion by the city council. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Penta, Zero Summit Road, Medford, Mass. Former member of this august body. I come here to address the city council on this important issue that has important but different consequences depending on what side of the issue that you might be on. At the outset, I want to address and thank Curtis Tuden for propelling this issue before our citizens of the city of Medford. Since this is an election year and we're all running for office, those of you that are and those that might be candidates running for office boasting about all the wonderful accomplishments and the hard votes that you had to take. To me, this is a very important issue, and I think it's an issue that needs to be presented and discussed and to have everybody, including the mayor, the city council, and the school committee, take a position on this issue. Because isn't it weird when we think about our America today and you see all the things that are taking place, whether it's before the National Football League or Little Pop Warner Kids? The use of our American flag, the national anthem, seems to be at issue. And our culture seems to be at issue. But where are we going with all of that? I don't know. You know, sanctuary cities had its beginning here in the United States back in the nineteen eighties. Central folks, central people from Central America, left their country here looking for political refuge because of the oppressive nature that was taking place. And what took place here in this country, in the churches, many of the churches throughout this country, they took these folks in, believing them to be, you know, in need of help. And for which we did, we helped them out. But that sort of like has morphed itself since nineteen eighty-one to what it is today, addressing itself to sanctuary cities. You know, and as a result of sanctuary cities becoming what they are and having a different interpretation, you, Mr. President, just read something that was dated November twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. If you go to that third whereas, it says the city of Medford stands in support of all immigrant groups. I think the word before all immigrant should be legal, all legal immigrant groups. Because we, the people of the United States, are a nation built on laws. Its foundation is built on laws. And it's on the legality of what we do each and every day. And it seems, and it seems that because of all this illegal immigration that is taking place in this country, you know, have we as a country now forgotten the fact or gotten to the point where everybody has a right? We're giving everybody rights, but nobody wants responsibility. But the responsibility that's being borne each and every day is the Mr. and Mrs. America, Mr. and Mrs. Medford taxpayer. You know, we, I cannot think of any prouder comment than something that's written on the banner of the VFW on Mystic Avenue. It says, "All lives matter." Everybody's lives matter. White, black, blue, green.
Everybody's lives matter, white, black, blue, green. I don't care what nationality you are. If you're here in this country, and you're here legally, or you have the proper legal documents, earning your way to become an American citizen, your life matters. And for those folks that come here illegally, that's in and of itself the question that's before us right now. You know, we, as a community, are very generous to so many people. You members on the council, especially your two new members, Councillor Scarpelli and Councillor Falco, you've just gone through two years of community block grant funding. And if you go through each and every one of those community block grant fundings, you will see the amount of money that's been dedicated and prioritized to charities within not only the city of Medford, but in the tri-city and outside the city of Medford. You've also seen monies go to legal counsel for people who are in immigration—to have an illegal immigration condition, needing to get itself resolved and coming forward. We also have in this community all our churches and all the food pantries and the shelters taking care of as many people as they can. And while they're doing that, the question then becomes, who comes first, the illegal or the legal? And I think a sanctuary city, in and of itself, presents that particular situation. Like I said, again, depending on what side of the issue you're on. Sanctuary cities throughout this country, and there's two hundred of them right now, that bar the use of government resources to enforce federal immigration laws. And they also allow illegals charged with crimes to be released without notifying federal authorities. Now, in a report that was submitted in December of two thousand and fourteen to Congress, it stated that more than thirty thousand convicted criminals have been released by ICE at the end of two thousand and fourteen, and they have gone back to the states, to the cities and towns that they came from. But inclusive of those crimes, there was one hundred and seventy-three homicides, there were three hundred and seventy-three sexual assaults, there were one hundred and eighty-six kidnappings, and there was one thousand—excuse me, there was fourteen thousand and fourteen drunk driving charges to individuals that did not have a license. There were more than thirty thousand convicted criminal citations issued during that time. What does that say to the law-abiding citizen? But more importantly, what does that say to law enforcement personnel? Who especially now, if you're in a sanctuary city, you can't ask for identification as to, "Are you an immigrant or not?" You can't hold them, you can't call ISIS. ICE, excuse me. It has a ramification that just really says to the police officer of today, "Besides doing my job for the city that I'm in, I am now having to become aware of somebody who might be here illegally. And that person might get preferential treatment over someone who might be here legally, but that I can arrest and imprison." And that's really not right. There's a particular case that takes place from a gentleman and his two children that died. He came from Levon, Texas. And he was hit by an illegal immigrant who hit him head-on in a collision, and he killed him, his four-year-old son, and his twenty-two-month-old—strike that, his four-year-old daughter and his twenty-two-year-old month son. The illegal person was arrested and plea-bargained to a two-year sentence, a two-year sentence for wiping out a husband, a father, and a daughter. The woman, subsequent to that, has had some kind of public—how could you say—retaliation because she felt that the justice system didn't do her right, because she complained because of that. And the person that killed her husband, her daughter, and her son was Hispanic, she now becomes the culprit and not the victim. These are just little nuances. We can go all the entire country. There are many—there are cases where police officers have been killed, shot, brutally murdered by illegal immigrants here in this country, and that's not right, absolutely not right. You know, when we think about what's going on, illegals, they have the benefits of our free medical system. They go to our quality schools, they get free housing and free food, but they don't choose to blend in by learning English and assimilating to our American culture, and further by committing crimes outside or inside the community or the state that they're in. It adds a definite cost to our police, to our public safety, to our public education, and to Mr. and Mrs. Medford and Mr. and Mrs. America. So the question then becomes, on a sanctuary city, you folks are running for office. I haven't seen one of you yet say or put anywhere in your literature, just one gentleman so far, he's in the back of the room, made the point that he is for sanctuary cities. I commend him for it. He took his position. It's a very, it's a very important issue to be discussed. Because if you're telling me that you're abiding by this November sixteenth—strike that, November twenty-third—resolution, well, this smacks of all the ingredients of a sanctuary city. Either we are or we're not. And I think you councillors and every candidate running for office needs to take that position. And the reason why they need to take that position, whether you're for or against, in a common, level-headed society, while we don't have to agree, we can respectfully disagree. And that's where I think we need to be going here in this community. You know, when you say we're a welcoming community, as a matter of fact, there's a billboard coming in on Route ninety-three. It says, "We are a welcoming"—we've always been a welcoming community. We've got the third-largest black population in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we've had it for years. And slowly but surely, they're leaving because nobody can afford to stay there anymore. The cost of housing in this community has gone completely out of control. Makes no sense at all. And if this president administration keeps wanting to put housing all over the place, and if this council doesn't want to review zoning, that's what's going to happen. You're going to have a city so out of control, you're not going to be able to understand what's going on. And Dr. Starella was right. Your finances will be so out of control. And if you add a sanctuary city to the mix, then please explain why you're doing it, and please let the people know, as a candidate for office, that a sanctuary city, you're either for it or against it.
Mr. Penta, we're running—you're running over your time. That was allotted.
I think this is a very important issue, you know?
We have a ten-minute time frame.
Okay.
There are other people that would like to speak.
Okay, all right, all right.
Appreciate it if you could wrap it up.
I think the bottom line, my comment would basically—I don't think any city council, any mayor, any school committee person, or anyone, should tell a police department how to do their job, especially whether they're legal or illegal. That's their job to protect and to serve, and not to be controlled by a political hierarchy in a community that turns around and says, "We want to be a sanctuary city."
Thank you, Mr. Penta.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Curtis Tuden. I live at three forty High Street, Medford, Massachusetts. And I'm here to speak in support of Medford pursuing sanctuary city status, or any initiative that makes it clear that this is a community that is welcoming and safe for all residents, regardless of immigration status. So there is a lot of reasoning behind that. I also agree that it's an important topic that people need to take a stance on. I commend the City Council for their statement from last November. It definitely got a point across that you were trying to make. I commend the mayor and the police chief for expressing and assuring me in different conversations and other residents that Medford doesn't practice the tactics that are what sanctuary city—sanctuary city status tries to address. But all of that is great to practice, but it's one of those rare problems where we actually have to preach what we practice. So that shouldn't be too difficult. If we're already a city that does all these great things, we need to be clear in stating that we are sanctuary city status, or we are a safe community, whatever the title may be. It's up to the community to decide that particular label. But we need something that's clear so that all residents in the community can understand it. Specifically, as an employee of Medford Public Schools, I see on a regular basis, when immigrant families come into the building, and because they don't speak English, and because of the culture of fear that is added on to by all the statistics that were read, even though it is documented that immigrants commit crimes at lower rates than ordinary legal Americans, every day, these families come into the Medford Public Schools, and they're afraid to make eye contact because they don't know where that may lead, whether it's with an authority figure, or with a teacher, or anybody, even another student. I wish, as someone who doesn't speak another language, that I could hand them a piece of paper in any language that clearly explains that being part of Medford Public Schools is a right of all students, and that in this building, or really in all city buildings, you shouldn't feel discriminated against or in danger in any way, whether that's in a classroom, or talking to a police officer, or talking to a firefighter, going to an emergency room. All these essential aspects of just being a human being that a city should be able to provide without a culture of fear that is unfortunately sweeping across the country. So for Medford to stand up and label itself what I will ultimately see as the right side of history, then I think now is the appropriate time to do so. So thank you for listening, and I appreciate everybody coming out and contributing to the conversation.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kevin Wolfson, one fifty-nine Central Ave. Thank you for welcoming the public and the chance to speak. I want to—I'm a participant in a group called Safe Medford that many of you have heard from. The mission of our group is to advocate for all people in Medford, regardless of their immigration status. And I know many of you, I hope, have seen our website, safemedford.org. If you haven't, I hope that you will take the time to look through it. And you'll notice that we don't use the term sanctuary city because it is often connected to statistics like Mr. Penta was citing, and the sort of kind of building of fear that is not what we're about, not what we're intending, and that we feel distorts the issue. So the term that we use is safe communities, but regardless of what the term is, our goal is to pass a set of policies, and these are policies that are used across the country, that are supported by police organizations and sheriffs across the country, that clarify how the police does and does not work with federal immigration. The Homeland Security Department, which is what ICE is part of, is, if I recall correctly, the second-largest, second-most heavily—second-biggest-funded department, it's either the second or third in the entire country. They have no lack of resources. They are extremely well-funded. They have all of the money they need to do the work that they are supposed to do, and that all of us will agree is important work. The Medford Police Department, the city of Medford, clearly from statements of people so far tonight, clearly is not nearly as well-funded. The Medford Police Department doesn't have enough police officers, according to many people, and I have no doubt about that. The police station itself is in disrepair, and I know that there is the welcome push to build a new police department. And a large part of what we—why we're asking for what we're asking for is so that the limited resources of Medford are co-opted by a very well-funded national organization. It's about protecting—in one way, about protecting Medford's rights to be an independent community that decides what to do with its own resources. That's one thing I wanted to point out. The other thing that I wanted to point out is the discussion of legality and illegal and legal immigrants and that sort of thing. I want to point out that immigration offenses are civil offenses. They are not criminal offenses, and they are often connected to criminal offenses with statistics, again, like Mr. Penta was citing. But that is not what we're getting at. We're getting at people who are at various stages of immigration documentation, not being treated like criminals for what is a civil offense, in the same way that speeding ticket is a civil offense. Like Mr. Tuden just said, immigration status has no correlation to people being more violent. There are plenty of ways that you can pick statistics that make it seem like that's the case, and it's not the case. And again, I hope you'll look at the safemedford.org website, where we explain that more clearly and more thoroughly. Finally, I want to point out that cities that have these policies—I mentioned earlier that police organizations and sheriffs across the country support policies like this. Cities that have these policies are economically stronger, they are statistically safer, and the reason for that is that people who might be at risk of being targeted by ICE don't feel like they're afraid to call the police if they see a crime, or if they are a victim of a crime. And that makes all of us safer. So again, thank you for the chance to speak. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Maria Stat, one-twenty-two Boston Avenue. Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here, and thank you for serving. This is a service. I'd like to give you just a few facts. I am a lifetime member of the NAACP. I am a member of Safe Medford. Before I give you four facts, I want to say that my husband was an immigrant, and my in-laws were immigrants. And the thought of my child coming home from school one day, and her grandmother or her dad not being there is insane. Less than three percent of eleven million undocumented residents have been convicted of felonies, compared to six percent of the general population. Undocumented residents are ineligible for programs like SNAP and TANF and non-emergency Medicare, yet they pay into our social security system. It's true, some new immigrants, newly arrived immigrants, do go to our public schools, but second- and third-generation immigrants stimulate our economy. Unauthorized people, undocumented people, pay about twelve billion dollars a year in state and local taxes, and this is cited from two thousand and fifteen. Immigrants with little English and limited job skills do the jobs that Americans often don't want to do. We are a richer society when we are an inclusive society. And I really want people to seek understanding and then to be understood. There is a difference between undocumented individuals and criminals who have broken federal and state laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Robert Cappucci of seventy-one Evans Street. Over the centuries of this nation, we've always welcomed immigrants to the United States. Me personally, I encourage more immigration to the United States, especially if it's from countries that oppress their people in any way. But we do have a supreme law of the land, and it is the U.S. Constitution. And under the U.S. Constitution, there are laws that govern how one becomes a citizen of the United States. For a city to automatically dictate what the police can or can't do in terms of immigration questions undermines the very reason it makes this country good to come to. You're subverting the Constitution, which for centuries has helped a lot of people come from impoverished or oppressive nations to come here and build a much, a much better life. One of the things I want to talk about is the cost of illegal immigration. While it's true that the last speaker said it's something like twelve billion that they're putting back into the economy, at the same time, a year, it's a hundred and thirty-five billion that's coming out for the cost of illegal immigration to the United States. On the state level, among the fifty states, it's eighty-eight billion dollars a year. At the federal level, it's forty-five billion dollars a year. So the costs coming in don't even come close to the costs going out, in terms of prison upkeep, schools, hospital, all sorts of things that these costs rise on. I don't think that—for a city like Medford, for a group like Safe Medford to come along and, you know, this has nothing to do with building fear or anything else. It's a matter of res— respect for the law in becoming a citizen of the United States. It's an affront, in my opinion, to the many millions of people who have come here, the legal way, to all of a sudden just basically grant amnesty, which is essentially what this is, by dictating to the police. That quite frankly, I don't think the city council has really the experience to tell police officers what their policy should be. And under the guise of the feel-good appeal to the emotions of making Medford a welcoming city, like Mr. Penta said, we've always been a welcoming city. I'll leave you with this question. Is Medford being a welcoming city by basically subverting the rule of US constitutional law by not enforcing it by policy? Or would we be a welcoming city by doing something very simple that this city does not do? When a new resident or a new business comes to this city to open shop, or to live here, Medford does not send them a welcome packet, saying, here's where Wright's Pond is, here are some discount coupons to the Chevalier Theater, or to Carol's Restaurant, here are the city services, here's when we pick up trash in your neighborhood? That's a welcoming city? It's not. But circumventing the laws governing immigration under the US Constitution is? I beg to differ. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel Bandrop. I live at 19 Fulton Street. I am a part of Safe Medford, and I've also been a part of the People Power as well. And I would just like to clarify that we have not been dictating what the police should be doing. We have been asking them to put their current policies in writing, so that that can be used to ensure people that they are not going to be treated in such a way. We're not saying do this. We're saying we appreciate that you are doing this. As things are, please put it in writing, so that it can be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Munir Germanus. I live at 3 Summit Road, and I appreciate the opportunity to address this group. I am a naturalized citizen. My wife and I became citizens primarily because we happen to be well-educated. We both have PhDs. So it was very useful for various businesses to work and hire us. There are many immigrants who unfortunately don't have the luxury, and I think basically welcoming means welcoming for all, and not welcoming just for the educated. So, I personally am quite in favor of having Medford, and actually all of Massachusetts, become a sanctuary city, just like the state of California. And I would certainly urge all candidates running for office, including you, lady and gentleman, to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Eileen Lerner, and I live at 9 Adams Circle in Medford. For all of my adult life, I have worked with immigrants. The past 25, I've been teaching English to adults. I agree it's a good idea for immigrants to speak English. Where are the programs? Where is the money? People come here, they have to work hard to support their families, you know, and often they don't have cars, and they're maybe working two, three jobs, and they don't have the time to learn English. Sometimes when people are laid off from jobs, they get, so they get, you know, unemployment compensation, and part of the deal for that is that they take English classes. I've had those kind of people. Women who have been in this country for 25 years, never learned English, because they didn't have the opportunity, they didn't have the time, they didn't have the money. But when they were given it, they were so, so happy to learn English. So if we want people to learn English, we have to put more money into programs to teach them English, you know? And also, you know, talking about immigrants and criminals is so deceptive, because immigrants, and undocumented immigrants, have a much, much lower rate of crime than American citizens do. Most of them are just too busy trying to survive, and doing lots of jobs that Americans don't want to do. And who is it who decides? Who comes into the United States? Isn't it a bunch of white men with privilege, and power, and money? You know, who says that a woman from Honduras, who's fleeing domestic violence, and gangs, can't come in?
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Can we keep it down in the back there? Someone is speaking. Thank you. I apologize.
That's okay. And to talk about the flag, but not to mention slavery, the legacy of slavery that we're living in, to talk about disrespect to the country, when we're not talking about all the numerous black people that we've seen slaughtered by white racism, by white supremacy, and when people object to that, when people stand up and say this is wrong, or they take a knee, or they protest, then the issue becomes the flag, and not discrimination, not unjust killings? It's so deceptive. You know, my grandparents came here from Poland. I wouldn't be alive if they hadn't been able to come here. I appreciate the United States so much, and my life, and the life of my children, my grandchildren, and my new great-grandchildren. And I want the same rights for other people. I've met these people. They're good people. They contribute to our country. They do a lot of jobs that other people don't want to do. I recently had hip replacement surgery. And who were the people that were taking care of old people in this country but immigrants? And believe me, I didn't ask them if they were documented. I didn't care if they're documented, or they're undocumented. I'm glad they're here. I'm glad they're safe. I'm glad they're contributing to our communities with their skills and their money. I mean, right now, we've had an instance where down on the Cape, they had trouble staffing the hotels and the restaurants, right? And people lost money down there, because they didn't have enough immigrants like they used to have. And in California, they're having trouble getting people picking the fruit and the vegetables, right? You know, you may want to call them illegal, or whatever you want to call them, but they've done a lot of work for our country, and they haven't been treated fairly a lot of times. And I just want to stand and say, I support these people. I think they contribute to our economy, and to the richness of our culture, which isn't only white and Christian, but is multicultural. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Joanna Hicks, 15 Talbot Street. I'm a fourth-generation Japanese-American, and Filipino on my mother's side. And some of you may know, during World War II, Japanese-Americans were incarcerated, 120,000 of them, just based, on the basis of their national origin. Some of the men of that generation went on to serve for the, in the armed forces, and became the most decorated unit in World War II, sent into some of the most dangerous missions. And I wanted to support safe communities in Medford, and speak out that, you know, immigrants, including undocumented immigrants, served this country in the military, as well as contributing to the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
William Graves, 69 Stanley Avenue. I'm also a member of Safe Medford, and in addition, I'm an immigration lawyer, and I've been practicing immigration law for about 20 years. I think that having Medford become a safe community, and declaring itself a safe community is a good idea. I think it promotes safety in the community. I don't think it subverts the law. It certainly doesn't subvert the federal law in any way. Immigration law isn't really constitutional law. It's statutory law. Congress basically has the power to make laws governing immigration, and it's enforced by the executive branch. It's primarily civil law, as Kevin had pointed out earlier. Not much of it is criminal law. So, when people are here without documentation, or expired documentation, they're here in a civil violation, not a criminal violation. In recent months, I think the climate of fear has greatly increased, and I certainly see this in my practice. I see, I get calls from parents who are afraid to send their kids, their US citizen kids, to school, because they're afraid that they may be questioned about the immigration status of one or both of their parents. And, you know, I try to let them know that that's not the case, and that won't happen. People are afraid to go out, and I think that people are afraid to call the police when they're a victim of a crime, or if they witness a crime. They're afraid to come to City Hall to complain about a landlord. And I think that creating a safe community, and Medford declaring itself a safe community, will make all residents, all members of our community, the people with whom we live, to feel welcome, and to feel welcome to communicate with the police, or with the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Records, the meeting of October 10th.
Rachel Tannenhouse, 26 Pearl Street, please. Hi. My name is Rachel, and I am the granddaughter of refugees. And, yes, I am in favor of Medford being a sanctuary city. So y'all can get a head start on snarking now. And my grandmother, who is 97, came here as a refugee. And she, I don't know, or I haven't really asked whether or not she got here legally, because I don't care, because I'm pretty happy to be alive, and also Hitler. So, like, frankly, if people are escaping genocide, I think that really, that is a situation that I don't get to do a lot of judging about. Now, I'm pretty sure that there are a number of people in the room who have studied their history. So if you have done so, then you know that much of the rhetoric around immigrants today is very, very similar to the rhetoric around Jewish refugees in the 1940s, late 1930s, early 1940s. Really, really very similar, talking about crime rates, talking about loyalty to the country, talking about who were we really letting in, talking about who's a real American. And I just want to make that really clear, that a lot of people, some of whom are relatives of mine, died because of that sort of rhetoric. I'm not really interested in a community where we let that happen again. One of the things we talk about, one of the things that we say is never again. And I really feel that as a member of a community who, you know, every few years or so, somebody pops up and tries to wipe us out, we've gotten really good at looking out for this kind of thing. Real good. We know it when we see it. And I also feel like there have been some logical fallacies that have been going on here. For example, if you're really excited about the statement that all lives matter, then you have to believe that all lives matter. And the question is, do they? Or is it just the people that you decide matter? You know, you can't say all lives matter, and then in the same breath say, but not yours. Not these. These do not have, these can't be safe here. I also agree with the statement that, you know, obviously, God forbid, somebody in this room gets attacked, or robbed, or anything like that, and there's a witness who is undocumented. You're on your own under these current circumstances, because they're not going to get sent back to a place where somebody's trying to wipe them out. And I should point out, by the way, that in my family, nobody ever asks my family if they are here legally, because they pass, because they're white, and nobody cares, and nobody stops and checks you if you're white. So, you know, I think that when we also talk about who's here, and who's getting checked, and who's not, it's really clear that we only mean certain, even if you don't think you mean it, you really only mean certain subcategories of folks who are undocumented. Also, I love how people who generally espouse small government are really okay with our police department being federalized, and with the federal government telling our local police department what to do. That doesn't really follow logically. What we are saying is that a federal agency cannot come in and commandeer our local police department, and use their resources to do their work with a sanctuary city. And so my question again is, are you for small government, or are you only for some small government? And I also agree that I hear, and I agree, that our police department is severely overworked and under-resourced, and not making a statement that the federal government can't come in and commandeer them, and use them for their own purposes, is simply adding to the problem. And I hear a lot of people talking about how we have to make things easier for our police department. We have to hire more police officers. We need to build a new police station. And if you believe those things, then why would you possibly believe that you would want to stretch their resources for things that aren't even, that aren't even being done by a local agency, that actually a federal agency is perfectly capable of doing themselves? I feel like this is a situation where we want to be on the right side of history. Because my family has seen what the other side of history looks like. And it ain't pretty, and it killed a bunch of us. And if you think anything different is going on in the countries that are specifically, the numbers are being cut down on, if you think anything all that different is going on in Syria, if you think anything all that different is going on in Sudan, then maybe you haven't studied your history all that well. I hear Medford Public Schools are pretty good. You should go take a class. I just want to say that I can't see much, but I see you, Mr. Penta.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I see what people are doing.
We're not criticizing anybody here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I see what the people who want to keep out immigrants are doing. And I know what was done to my family, and I know what it looks like. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and let it happen again. So yeah, I am really, really in favor of all the candidates stating their position on this, because I want to know who to vote for, and who not to. And I think actually, we're all in agreement about that. We all want folks to make a statement on these things, because we want, we know where we fall on this, and we want to know who to vote for. So I think that's something we are all on the same page. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony DiAntonio, and I live on Yale Street in Medford. This is a pretty hot topic here, but I'm going to tell you something right now. You can take all the statistics, all the figures and everything, just throw them out the window, because everybody skews statistics. But what's really aggravating is, these people come up here, and they say, well, my family did this, and my family did this, and I'm this, and I'm that. We're all part of the same group. We've all, in our families, every single one of us, have had people that have bled and died in fields, and far away from here, okay? But the thing that really aggravates me, is if you notice the tone, it only took a matter of 10 minutes before we got into white privilege, okay? We're responsible for everything in this world that goes wrong. Well, I'm sick and tired of that. You can't legislate behavior on somebody. Everybody, I don't understand this culture of fear. I haven't seen that. This city, Medford, was more diverse than it is now, when I was growing up. And everybody, that's right, they are immigrants. We're all immigrants here, and there's all ways to come in here. But what they're doing is they're making it very divisive, because it's them against people that have a different point of view. So if you have a different point of view, you're on the wrong side of history. Well, that's a bunch of baloney. So, I just want to tell you that nobody is saying you can't come here, or anything like that, but if you take a real good look at it... that, but if you take a real good look at it, we've had a botched up immigration system for years here. And now a certain political group has found out that by catering and offering to illegals, that they've created their own voting bloc for the future, okay? And I'm just sick and tired of everybody being blamed when other people, you know, isn't this safe, Medford? You're insinuating that Medford is not safe. Medford is safe and the police should be commended for what they're doing with what they have. So just think before they speak over here because I'm getting really aggravated by this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Andrew Castanetti, Cushion Street, former Medford City Council candidate, October 17th, We're all immigrants, except for the Yoscomo and the Indian, plural. In a perfect world or a perfect country, we'd not even have borders. On the other hand, my father sponsored my mother's brother to come from Northern Italy to come here back in the 60s. And I had to get him a job and gave him an apartment half price. And I kind of feel bad for the people that are trying to do this legally. They're waiting in line, maybe they're paying attorney fees or who else they're paying, I don't know. And maybe they won't be able to get in legally. And I don't know what kind of process it is these days, if there is such a system at all. So therefore, I coined the phrase, "All sentient beings matter, period." I said that, not Bob Dylan.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address of the record, please.
Ray Scavo, 9 Sunset Ave, Medford. And we talk about white privilege. I've gotten hit a couple of times by me being rich, white, and privileged. Rich, I don't think so, maybe a little well-off than other people, but the privilege was for me to work 20 hours a day, seven days a week, to get to this point. So I worked very hard. I'm a second generation of immigrants, both sides, my father and my mother's side. Came in and they came in legally, they worked very hard, they did what they had to do and we followed that suit right down the line. I got my work ethic from my grandparents, that I was able to work 15 to 20 hours a day, seven days a week to get to this point. I employ, at least 60% of my employment staff are immigrants and they are very good workers. Are they legal? Yeah, they're legal, but they work very, very hard. So tonight, I just want to, I just want to make the record straight as to how I feel as far as, you know, sanctuary cities. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to express a concern and a request to this honorable body. I have a concern regarding a statement which was made by a council candidate. He has promised, if elected, to the council that he would make a certain, that he would make certain that Medford became a sanctuary city. This is a bold statement with all doubts removed of his intention. I give him credit for being honest, although I strongly disagree with him on this issue because we are a country of laws. Laws are legal documents, they say what they say, not what you want them to say. If you want a law changed, you work to have it changed. You don't circumvent the law. However, I have listened and observed others, both elected counselors and candidates, use words and phrases which appear to have a hidden agenda. I see this as an attempt to receive approval and support from certain voting blocs that exist in this city. This is not right. Let me repeat, I am not in favor of sanctuary cities here in Medford or anywhere else. This is my opinion and more importantly, it is my right to express such. Therefore, I'm requesting that all city counselors and candidates make it known by a simple yes or no, whether they are for Medford becoming a sanctuary city or not. That's a simple yes or no answer. Counselors, you have the opportunity this evening to set the record straight, yes or no. The public has the right to know. Thank you.
Name and address of the record, please.
Robert Pentacero, Summit Road, Medford, Mass. First of all, for the young lady to my, behind me, I'm not a white, privileged individual. I've had to work for everything in my life, starting at 5:00 in the morning for eight consecutive years, driving a canteen truck, being held up three times, shot at twice. But I didn't give up because I knew what I wanted to do. I wanted to get a college education and go forward with my life. And that's what I did. I did not come here tonight to be decisive or have people become decisive. I came here tonight to present an issue, thanking Mr. Tooten, who made the acknowledgement that he is for a sanctuary city. It's a subject matter that needs to be discussed. The statistics that were given are actual statistics. You can't get away because they're not lying. And for the other lady who indicated that the crime rate for the individuals who are undocumented are less than regular American citizens that are documented and are legal, that in and of itself spells to the question of the police department. They're doing more work because they have to deal with undocumented illegals over and beyond their regal, of course. Now, are all of them bad people? Absolutely not. Do they deserve a fair shot? Absolutely. And if they have to have some political intervention which is taking place right now in Washington, so be it. But the fact of the matter is this, I stand here and I resent the fact of anyone, any seven of you or anyone in this audience, who wants to turn around and say, because I was born white, that I am privileged, that is false, that is wrong, and that is a lie. And you should be ashamed of yourself for saying that.
Name and address of the record, please.
Okay. Eileen Lerner, 9 Adams Circle. When I talked about rich and privileged people, I wasn't talking about you, Mr. Penta. I was talking about the people that write the immigration laws. I was talking about the people who decide to put Japanese people into concentration camps, the people who decide whether people come in from certain countries and not from certain other countries. I was not talking about you, Mr. Penta. But the fact is, you have to realize that white supremacy has been in control in this country and that it is under attack now. And that is a fact, whether you want to face it or not.
Good evening. Name and address of the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Croll. I live at 8 Boilston Terrace in Medford. I've been a Medford resident for about 30 years. I'm also a labor attorney in Boston and the granddaughter of immigrants is probably most of us here are. My grandparents were fortunate because when they fled violence in Russia, the immigration laws were much less restrictive than they are today and they really didn't have to go through too much scrutiny. Those of us who follow the law knows that laws change very frequently when political administrations change. And with regard to immigration laws, when we talk about undocumented immigrants, many of the people who are undocumented were legal when they came to this country, but the status changes as the law change. We have Haitian immigrants who may be losing their protected status. We have the DACA Dreamers who were raised in this country and who had been promised a road to citizenship and who are now in peril. So it's not only the immigrants that are fleeing violence as our grandparents did, but immigrants who came here legally who can now find themselves undocumented and at risk. And that's just one point I want to make. Then secondly, I very much applaud the speaker who talked about having a business and working hard to establish a business that employs good immigrant workers. Most of our grandparents worked very hard so that those of us who followed them could go to school, become professionals, pursue businesses, work with our hands, whatever it took. But what I can tell you from my labor practice is that there are a lot of companies who are unscrupulous and they employ undocumented immigrants in order to keep wages low, in order to violate safety laws and to imperil all of us. It's that kind of competition that lowers the bar in a community like Medford and other communities. And as long as you have immigrant workers who are in fear of complaining and reporting crimes or complaining about safety violations, you stand at risk that that is going to bring down the standard of living of everybody in our community.
Name and address of the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Robert Cappucci, 71 Evans Street. I'll try to be very brief. I don't know anybody from my side of this issue who doesn't want to see Medford become a sanctuary city. I don't, I didn't hear a single one of them say they oppose immigration. In fact, I started out when I first spoke saying I encourage immigration, especially from other countries where there's oppression or just subpar standing livids, living standards. It's difficult to embrace, to embrace this issue on so many levels. But I really think it's, I mean, people want to come up here and say that, you know, just saying that the reasons why we're for honoring the law is somehow related to the Nazis or white privilege. And then they want to say that the statistics we bring up are fear mongering is, it's just a little hypocritical, Mr. President. I also want to address the point of being for limited government, but also being for a police force in Medford that's not a full force. It has nothing to do with limited government. It has everything to do with government's first duty, in my opinion, which is protection of the citizens. We are about 30 officers insufficient on our police force. In the current policy of not asking immigration status, if that's what the police department now deems fit, then that's what I support. But make no mistake, what the policy for the Safe Medford group is, is to actually put into law, taken away any possibility of police asking, should the question arise about immigration status. You know, it was actually President Obama who put forward the Secured Community Program, which Massachusetts never actually signed on to, which automatically, if there was any question of immigration status, that fingerprints and mug shots had to be sent to ICE. Massachusetts never joined on to the Secured Communities Program. And I really don't know why. And whether it's not constitutional law or state law, I mean, there's no skirting around with legal jargon, the fact that there are laws that govern legal citizenship in the United States. And my side of the argument is that we just honor these laws. It has nothing to do with white supremacy or Nazism. It's just a simple matter of respecting the law because we are, as the founding fathers said repeatedly, a nation of laws and those laws have to be respected. Are you circumventing the very reason why it's a good country to come to? And finally, one of the things that gets established when you establish a state or a city as a sanctuary city, you're creating a magnet for illegal residents to come to, which makes it pretty easy for ICE and for whoever's in power of immigration to know where to go to. So it's actually not a service to undocumented illegal residents of the United States. You're actually putting a target on their back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, Chief. Name and address of the record, please.
Leo Asacco Jr., 227 Elm Street, Medford, Chief of Police. I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor your meeting. I know you're almost ready to move on to the next topic, but a few things were mentioned tonight that I have to clear up. I'm concerned about the people who are at home watching this and thinking that Medford is not a safe city. First and foremost, Medford is a very safe city. It's a very welcoming community. All you have to do is look at the real estate transfers and see what the prices are for the homes that are being sold in the city. People want to move to this community. People want to live here. People like this community because it is a safe community. I don't have the statistics with me this evening, but I can tell you this, that our crime rate in this, in this city is much lower than our surrounding communities. And that's one of the reasons why people want to live here. The low crime rate is directly related to the hard work of the men and women of the Medford Police Department. But beyond that, it's due to the work of the residents that live in this city, all residents that live in this city, that are willing to call and report a crime, report a suspicious activity, report that they've been involved in, they've been the victim of a crime. And that's one of the things we're concerned about as a police department, that we don't want to stifle that. We want everyone to feel comfortable to come forward to the police, to report being a victim of a crime, to report what they may have seen in other criminal actions, which will help us to keep the city safe. Now, it was said earlier by some members that were before this rail, that the police department is being told what to do. The police department is not being told what to do. The police department is following the same practice and procedure that we've followed for many years. I've been a police officer 36 years in this city, 27 of them as chief. Nothing has changed. We do the same thing today that we did pretty much 36 years ago. So my entire career, we've been following the same practice and procedure. I can tell you that I very rarely ask anyone if they were a citizen of the United States. But if I put the handcuffs on someone and arrest them, there's a procedure that we follow. They come to the station, they are booked. In the booking, we get all their information. They are fingerprinted. The fingerprints go to the FBI. FBI shares them with other entities, so it goes to the state, then it goes to the FBI and they share it with the other entities. And sometimes, it can be 10 minutes, sometimes it can be two hours, sometimes it can be as much as a day. We'll get something back saying that that person is not who they say they are because all arrests are backed up by fingerprints. And that's the only time we really know when someone may be in this country illegally. They may have been deported before and sent back. And there isn't anyone in this room, there isn't anyone in the city, anyone in the state or anyone in the country that doesn't want to see violent criminals arrested and dealt with regardless of their status. And I can assure you that they're not running loose because the Medford police are being sloppy or they're ignoring something. If they're, if they're out there, there's maybe some other glitch in the works, but it isn't the part of the police department. We make the arrests that need to be made. Sometimes, I can tell you that it hasn't happened, at least in this past year, but I can tell you since probably November, when the elections happened, and January, when that administration took office, the fear factor rose. It's probably because of all of the rhetoric about immigration enforcement. But nothing changed over the past several years, from the past several years. Everything we do is the same as what we did before. And we check everyone that we arrest and they go to Somerville District Court. If ICE calls us and says we have a detainer for the person that you have, we don't hold them based on that detainer. We already have them under arrest for another charge. If they make bail or they end up being transported to Somerville District Court in the morning, ICE is told where those people will be. And that's the extent of it. We do not serve as ICE agents. Civil immigration laws are primarily the responsibility of the federal government. It's been said, we're not, we don't have the resources to go knock on doors and check statuses, nor do we really have the interest to do that. We just, what would we do if we found them? Would ICE be able to respond and help us? They probably would not. By the same token, we're not being deputized to work as ICE agents. But if they call us because they're in the middle of something, if it's an officer's safety issue, yes, we'll go help them to make sure that they don't get hurt or that no one else gets hurt. But I can tell you, we have not had a situation in the city of Medford that resulted at least in an ICE detainer that I know of. We have made several arrests, major league drug dealers, and we've sought information from ICE. And in a couple of cases, there were detainers issued. But those were serious But those were serious criminal, criminals, criminal element that's bringing poison into our community and they had to be dealt with. And I don't think anyone disagrees with that being done. But I don't want anyone in the public, anyone that's watching this or anyone in this room tonight, to think that the Medford police are going easy on crime or easy on the immigration issue. We work within the realm that we're dealt, dealt with and we do the best that we can with what we have. No one is going to escape what needs to be done, but we're not going out there looking just for the civil violation. That's not our, that's not our focus. I think everyone agrees that we have far more important things that we need to do. But getting back to the main issue, Medford is a safe city. Whatever you want to call it, otherwise, the city, this is a safe city. People come here and we have great police officers out there doing a great job. We know, we definitely need more, but we're only as good as the information we receive from the public. So we want all segments of the, of the public documented, undocumented. We want people coming forward to, if they're a witness of a crime, to come forward and tell us what they saw. We don't want anyone to be quiet. And we don't want a segment of the community to be victimized because they're in fear of coming forward, that they'd be exposed, that they'd no doubt be a victim of robberies on a regular basis. So thank you for your time. I just wanted to clear that up. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Chief, for keeping us safe.
Name and address of the record, please.
Joe Villione, 59 Garfield Ave, Medford, Massachusetts. I have great respect for the Medford Police Department. There are, the majority are fine men and women. I was videotaping them up at Montvale Plaza. But I respectfully disagree with our police chief because I don't feel very safe in this city. Behind my house, a man was brutalized and murdered on Salem Street, his head beaten in so badly his brains were splattered. I see so much traffic problems. I've seen so many car accidents outside my window as I'm typing. I saw a guy in the street on Salem Street and I've had to get two restraining orders on people. The police didn't help me at all, not the fine, good men and women, but for political reasons, I had to go get a four-year restraining order on someone who was coming to my home and threatening me. So no, when, when I read in the paper that an MBTA cop doesn't get a breathalyzer, but eight days later, I'm in criminal court because people are lying about me, or if I get assaulted outside of these doors by someone in this room and the police don't do a proper investigation, but I have to spend thousands of dollars in court to find out that people lied about me. No, this isn't a safe city. It's, you have the haves and the haves-nots. And if you're outspoken, as I am, and you try to better your city, which I have tried to do, I have been beaten, I've been harassed and I've been threatened. And Police Chief Sacco has not helped me at all. So shame on you, Police Chief Sacco. I'm a victim and you left me, you hung me out to dry, Chief. And your own son didn't even get a breathalyzer.
Records of the meeting of October 10, 2017 were passed to Counselor Knight. Counselor Knight, how did you find those records?
Mr. President, on page 223, there is item 17689, Amendment B. Counselor Max, Commissioner, Counselor Scott Falcott, decide to not change the record as amended.
On the motion by Counselor Knight to accept the, the amendments as amended, although seconded by Counselor Donarussi, all of us with favor. Motion passes. Motion by Counselor Donarussi to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Falcott, all of us with favor. Motion passes, meeting adjourned.
Okay, I'll do it, but I don't really want to.
Now, clearly, in, in the book, it's presidential, well, politics, but presidential character, I suppose, perhaps an imaginary kind of long ago. But no one in the current context, I, I assume, could avoid seeing certain parallels with the current inhabitant of the White House. Did George Saunders bring this up at all? Was he interested in that?
Yes, I mean, obviously, he started writing it four years ago and I don't think he would have been hoping that Donald Trump would become president. Let's be totally blunt about that. But he's a journalist, as I say, at the posh end of journalism. The New Yorker asked him to report on Donald Trump as he was then a candidate. He told me that he set off on the US publicity trail for this book, however, just after Donald Trump had entered the White House, with some claim to be a bit of an expert, of course, on Donald Trump. And he told me that the broadly speaking unhappy young people, unhappy with the arrival of Donald Trump in, in the White House, actually found some kind of succor, some kind of comfort in discussing with him his new book and talking about it.
And we did twenty-eight cities in thirty days and it was so therapeutic for me, you know, to get in front of a crowd of, my audience skews a little young in this state, so kind of heartbroken young people. And we just talked it out, you know, during the readings. And I thought it was really wonderful to have Lincoln in our minds, but also to have a work of art that was weird and strange and hard. It was refreshing for me to have done it and I think it was refreshing for us to talk about that.
Now, Vincent, you've read the book.
Yep.
Okay, is it good? What do you, would you like it? I mean, ridiculous question, but it's, you, you've read it and I think you're probably the only one in the studio who has.
No, 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 it's, it's a perfectly fair question. And not everything I read for The Man Booker or, you know, whatever the topic of the day may be, I really love. Actually, George Saunders said something absolutely honest, I think. He's terribly nice guy, terribly honest guy in his press conference. He said lots of people have been telling him, they get to page thirty or so and then think they can't take, not the topic, but the way it's written. And it's written in a strange way, very, very short paragraphs, not entirely, but as I flick through in this not radio phonics way, you see, it's written in paragraphs of two and three sentences. He told me he was slightly influenced by thinking about Twitter and he's been trying to write like this for a while. So if you can get past that, and I have to say, I did have to force myself, sometimes, you know, it's nice if you have to read a novel for work, you don't have any alternative. So you've got to get on with it. And about, I would say, to be honest, about fifty pages in, I began to click with it. And the underlying story is deeply emotional and very engrossing. And strangely enough, there is, well, maybe not strange enough, there is talk of a film. I actually think it would make a magnificent play because it's a bit like dialogue as well as being a bit like Twitter. But actually, he's taken an option, so to speak, on his own novel and they're now trying to turn it into, into a movie.
Well, we do happen to have a real life Texan in the studio, at no extra expense. Andy, first of all, I mean, you haven't read this, have you?
No, no.
But we're talking about this as if it really matters. I mean, does The Man Booker Prize matter in America?
No, no, that's, that's an exactly right question. And I can't claim George Saunders, he's in Amarillo, which is kind of up in the panhandle. I'm, I'm from Fort Worth. But he's a Texan, that's great. I, when, when I heard about this and I went, when I heard we were going to be talking about it, I, I texted my brother about eight times and I said, hey, Joe, does this lead you to reading it? As an English teacher, he teaches ninth graders English in America, I said, does it lead your kids to buy the book? Does it mean that Saunders' sales will grow in the United States? He said, look, the sticker on the book makes everyone want to read it.
Really? It actually does make a difference?
That's what my brother told me. So I said, okay, sort of my follow-up to my brother, does it mean anything for English teachers? Does it mean that you're actually going to change your reading list based on a prize? He said, no.
Okay.
So, so, so they're not going to get, Saunders isn't going to get contracts with schools necessarily, certainly not next year or in a couple of years.
Yeah, but it'll help his sales.
Oh, without a doubt. And, and I think you're right. I think you see, I mean, you see the different sort of stickers on the books and it's like, oh, this won an award, it's probably pretty good. And, and Man Booker certainly has a reputation in the US.
Well, Simon, does it have a reputation in Singapore or around where you, you hang around in Asia? I mean, do, do people, are people impressed at all by these kind of things?
I, I don't think that's a topic that's going to come up very much today, I'm sorry to say. And, and I have to confess, I haven't read the book either, although it does actually look very interesting and it looks, it looks very contemporary, too.
But would book sellers, you know, you go into a bookshop in Singapore, would you see plastered over it Man Booker? And would people read it, buy it on that basis, do you think?
A small number would. I mean, the story of bookshops in Singapore is not a happy one. You know, the, the largest and best bookshop closed down some years ago. We've only really got one bookshop of any size, which is an English bookshop, which in a country of six million people is a bit sad.
Hmm, that's surprising, isn't it, really? But, but I mean, given obviously it's a Commonwealth, well, it recognizes a lot of Commonwealth authors, you might think perhaps that, that it's more impressive in that sort of way, but perhaps not. Actually, it's an interesting thing in this. Let me come back to you on this, Vincent, because this is a prize that, that has been opened up to Americans, as we said, only very recently, and they are dominating it. Is that a problem?
Three out of six this year are American. It's a huge industry. It sells an enormous amount of books. And also, it, it indicates the way that I think the book industry is going, that titles and prizes mean an awful lot, especially as people are buying on, let's be honest, Amazon and that kind of thing. These kind of labels do help.
Make a difference. Well, there we are. It's a good book, we've said that, we've got authentication for that from Vincent. It's sitting on the desk in front of him there. I'm going to have a go. Thanks to all of you for listening. Thanks to all of you being here. We've had quite a crowded studio tonight. Thanks to Simon over there in Singapore and Andy here. That's it from Business Matters, back tomorrow. Bye-bye.
This is the BBC World Service, where we're looking for solutions to the problem of domestic violence.
One hundred women on the BBC World Service.
The domestic violence will always happen if the men keep thinking that they have the right to hit the woman and if the wife keeps thinking that they deserve to hit by the man.
Behind closed doors, listen to the whole series at bbcworldservice.com/onehundredwomen. You're listening to the BBC World Service.
Our Latin America online editor is Vanessa Bouchlouta and she is here.
Let's speak now to our Moscow correspondent, Steve Rosenberg.
Our correspondent, Bethany Bell, has been following the UN talks.
Our South America correspondent, Katie Watson, spoke to us from Sao Paulo.
At bbcworldservice.com, this is the BBC World Service, the world's radio station.
Hello, at one o'clock GMT, welcome to the newsroom from the BBC World Service. I'm Ben Bland. The Chinese Communist Party's National Congress begins in Beijing. Big leadership changes are expected in President Xi's top team. The Islamic State group has been driven out of Raqqa. We hear from inside the Syrian city, where US-backed militia have defeated them.
A bunch of SDF armored vehicles came and did a symbolic drive around the roundabout, flying their flags, where three years ago Islamic State had done the same thing, flying its black flags.
Just hours before President Trump's new travel ban was due to come in, a judge in Hawaii has blocked it. We'll explain why and what happens next. Also coming up...
For me, it was just hearing the story that he had gone into the crypt of his son and I sort of had a little bit of a mental image of Lincoln holding the body in a graveyard at night.
The American author George Saunders, who's just won the Man Booker Prize for his novel about President Lincoln grieving over the death of his son.
I'm Stuart MacIntosh with the BBC News. Hello. China's ruling communists are about to begin their party congress. Security has been tightened across China ahead of the gathering, which takes place once every five years. China's president Xi Jinping is expected to set out his future priorities. Robin Brant is in Beijing.
Thousands of the Communist Party's most senior figures will come together here at the Great Hall of the People in rainy Tiananmen Square to witness a week of authoritarian theatre. Xi Jinping will open proceedings with a speech that assesses the promises made five years ago and, more importantly, points to the priorities for China going forward. Much of it will need to be decoded. He will be confirmed for another term at the top, but there is a crucial transition going on here. Most of the senior leadership are retiring and many in the level underneath will be replaced too after elections.
A US judge has largely blocked the latest version of President Trump's travel ban hours before it was due to come into force. The ban announced last month targets travelers from Iran, Libya, Syria, Yemen, Somalia, Chad, North Korea and certain individuals from Venezuela. Peter Bowes reports.
Judge Derek Watson, sitting in Hawaii, has stepped in to block the implementation of the ban with respect to all of the countries except North Korea and Venezuela. The state of Hawaii had argued that federal immigration law did not give the administration the authority to impose the restrictions. Judge Watson said the policy lacked sufficient findings that the entry of more than a hundred and fifty million nationals from six specified countries would be detrimental to the interests of the United States.
The White House called the ruling dangerously flawed. The Venezuelan president, Nicolás Maduro, has said the results of Sunday's gubernatorial elections have sent a strong message to the United States and its allies. Mr. Maduro said the unexpected victories of his candidates in seventeen of the twenty-three regions showed the Venezuelan people couldn't be cowed by an economic war. The president of Portugal, Marcelo Rebelu de Souza, has called on the country's parliament to decide whether the government should remain in office, following what he said were grave failings in the handling of recent deadly forest fires. More than one hundred people have died in less than four months. Alison Roberts has the details.
Portugal's president is a largely ceremonial figure but does have the power to dissolve parliament. In Oliveira do Hospital, one of the areas ravaged by the recent fires, he met and comforted victims' families. Then he spoke out, calling for action to ensure that citizens are never again abandoned to their fate as so many were this time. Parliament, he said, must clarify whether it wants the government to stay on or it will lack a mandate to enact urgent reforms in forestry and civil defence.
This is the world news from the BBC. The Iraqi prime minister has called for talks with Kurdish leaders to resolve the crisis that's followed last month's independence referendum in the country's Kurdish areas. Haider al-Abadi was speaking after government forces took control of two Kurdish strongholds and all oil production facilities in the region of Kirkuk. The chief of Amazon Studios, Roy Price, has resigned after reports that he harassed a producer and ignored allegations of sexual assault by the disgraced film mogul Harvey Weinstein. His resignation follows a series of tweets by the American actress Rose McGowan, addressed to the head of Amazon, Jeff Bezos. She said Mr. Price had repeatedly ignored her complaints of rape by Mr. Weinstein. The film producer denies all claims of non-consensual sex. There's been no comment from Mr. Price. Discussions over US proposals to reform the North American Free Trade Agreement have been extended into next year amid continuing differences between the US, Canada and Mexico. After a fourth round of talks in Washington, the US trade representative, Robert Lighthizer, said he hoped to... said he hoped to be able to rebalance the agreement. Ministers from Mexico and Canada suggested there were limits to what they could accept. The American author George Saunders has won this year's Man Booker Prize, a prestigious British literary award. Mr. Saunders won for his first full novel, Lincoln in the Bardo, which follows the US president's grief over the death of his son in 1862. Here's our arts correspondent, Rebecca Jones.
Lincoln in the Bardo, George Saunders.
Your Highness, readers and writers, it's all downhill from here.
George Saunders accepting one of the biggest prizes in publishing. His book's starting point was a real moment in history, when President Lincoln's beloved son died. George Saunders decided to tell the story through more than 100 ghosts stuck in the Bardo, a Tibetan state between life and death.
Hello, you're listening to the newsroom from the BBC World Service with me, Ben Bland. It's an event that happens once every five years and decides China's future. Major leadership changes are expected at the very highest levels of the Communist Party, which is holding its 19th National Congress in Beijing. President Xi Jinping has just opened the gathering with a speech to more than 2,000 delegates. Let's have a listen.
Syria say they've taken control of the city of Raqqa, which so-called Islamic State once claimed as the capital of its caliphate.
Unfortunately, we haven't quite got the link to the Great Hall of the People in Beijing. That is something we'll return to a little later. But President Xi has been speaking at the Great Hall of the People. There's little doubt among most people that he'll secure a second term as General Secretary of China's Communist Party, which is the most powerful position within the one-party state. But it's thought that Mr. Xi could also use the congress to lay the groundwork for extending his leadership beyond the year 2022, which is when he's meant to retire.